Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for this evening's meeting, May 9, 2016. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Winters.
Hi. Our pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on, I do ask that if you haven't already done so, please silence your cellphones. We will now have our Board Reflection led by Ms. Camphausen.
As we strive daily to keep the challenging needs of students to the forefront of our priorities and as we foster an environment that provides for success for all students, may we lead by example through modeling quality leadership and instruction to all students in the Cecil County Public School System.
Thank you. We will now move on to the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is adopted as presented. We will begin with our unfinished business, which is the consideration of revisions to secondary grading and reporting policies. Dr. Devine.
Thank you, President Branch, and good evening, members of the Board and members of our audience. I'd like to remind the Board that these are the repeal of policies, but everything has been provided for you to see in terms of regulations as well. I recommend that the Board of Education repeal policies IKAA and, of course, assessments IKAF, grading and reporting middle school, and IKAH, communicating grading criteria. Furthermore, I recommend that the Board of Education accept revisions to policies IKAG, grading and reporting high school, IKB, homework, IKD, honor roll, IKG, academic integrity as presented. All repeals and revisions are to be effective July 1, 2016.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. I'm on the regulation side about just communicating out to students. Dr. Lawson is working on a full plan of communication.
Great, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Any other items to be discussed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I would just like to say in reference to this policy that there were some many needed changes in this policy, and I appreciate the work of the Grading and Reporting Committee. It's a lot of work to get this, and I know it took probably at least a year. So my thanks to Dr. Lawson, Dr. Buckley, and the committee. I would also like to say to the students that happen to be in the room, I know you have a lot of changes to face next month. I promise you that the Board will keep an eye on things, and it'll be okay. But just know that we are going to keep an eye on everything with all the changes coming forth in the new year. With that said, we will move on to our new business items, beginning with public participation. The only person that has signed up this evening is Mr. Fazino.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to express my gratitude to the team at Cecil County Public Schools. For those who may not be aware, my name is Jim Fazino, and I am seeking the District 2 seat for the Cecil County Board of Education, and I'll be moving forward to the general election in November. I'm grateful for the time that principals, teachers, and support personnel have provided me during my school visits. I'm grateful certainly for the central office staff, as they've been very responsive to my questions and accommodated my requests for data over these past several months. My kids came home one day last week and shared part of their end-of-year schedule. They told me about STEM Night. They were going on a zoo field trip, having a fun fitness day, and they were off on Memorial Day to respect soldiers. Well, that got me thinking about what's happening in school and how we're recognizing the military. Since the military is such an important part of our community, I wanted to learn about the involvement and relationship our school system has with our military personnel and ensure we continue to recognize the sacrifices and contributions our active and retired servicemen and women have made for our country. So I reached out. And I learned that CCPS recognizes, honors, and celebrates our local veterans during school assemblies, encourages our students to write themed essays sponsored by the VFW, American Legion, and the Daughters of the American Revolution. I was pleased to hear that CCPS promotes student performances at parades and ceremonies honoring our military personnel, and I can use these events in my house to encourage more conversation around my dinner table. I also wanted to be sure that high school students had the opportunity to meet with recruiters from military if that was a post-graduation consideration for them. I was very pleased to learn that recruiting opportunities are available to CCPS high school students both during the school day throughout the year as well as the college and career fair in October. I learned that all military branches are welcome to each of our high schools, including School of Technology, and they may schedule time to either meet with large groups of students who have shown interest in meeting with them or set up information booths at the cafeteria to speak one-on-one with students. It was explained to me that recruiters are also available to schedule additional time during the school day to meet individually with students and their families or after school to discuss further options. I was moved to learn about the service learning projects with local military posts as well as the VA hospital. I discovered that throughout the school year, Perryville Middle collects items, creates well wishes cards, and visits with vets who are currently at the VA hospital. Cherry Hill Middle has folks from the VFW, American Legion, local veterans, come to the school and meet with groups of students. I even asked about post-graduation plans, and there are that 51 of our 2015 graduating seniors were enlisting in military service, and four of those students were awarded with an appointment to one of the military academies. I wanted you, the current Board, to hear just how responsive CCPS has been to outside inquiries and how I appreciate how our schools are honoring our servicemen and women while teaching core values to our children. Thank you.
Anyone else has signed up to speak this evening to address the Board? Is there anyone here that would like to do so? Hearing none, we will move on to our Board Member Reports, beginning with Mr. Manlove.
I don't really have a report, but it is amazing to me that we're almost at the end of the school year. I don't know where this year has gone, but we are fast approaching graduation ceremonies, and it is always an interesting time of the year to see the young students leaving into the world of all that different school and to see the enthusiasm. That's really all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Manlove. Ms. Winters.
I attended the Textbook Review Council meeting last Thursday, May 5, and during the meeting, we did endorse three texts to be considered this evening by the Board of Education. In addition, we had several new texts to look at, or programs of study, we should say, with the mixed media that we have today. These include secondary language arts, elementary English arts, and the committee will have an additional meeting the first week of June to take a vote on these, and anything endorsed then will also be carried forward to the Board in the June meeting.
Thank you very much. I attended a few events this past month. One of them was the Comcast Cares Day at Northeast High School on April 30. Comcast employees, community members, administrators, teachers, parents, and students all came out, a total of 295 volunteers. We spent time fixing up the grounds, painting, working on the fieldhouse, and other work that could be done in a one-day time. We had probably 100 more volunteers this year than we did last year. So it's a very good community event. I'd like to thank Mr. Kevin Kline, who was in charge of this. He's the Comcast employee who puts this together and chose Northeast High School. It's a lot of work, and I am grateful that he chose one of our schools. I also attended the Living Flag Ceremony at Leeds Elementary, where there was a ceremony by the, I believe, the Living Flag Foundation, and then the students went outside and created a flag, which the article was in the Cecil Wig. Thank you for the coverage. And you can see that the flag is made up simply by students holding up the different flags. Ms. McDowell, you and your team did a wonderful job. I know you're in here somewhere, but it was a great opportunity. The kids learned a lot about the flag, the history of it, and they got to be a part of it. I also would like to congratulate Northeast High School and Bea Manor High School, who were ranked 63rd and 67th in a recent report by the U.S. News &amp; World Report that ranked high schools in the state of Maryland. So congratulations to both of them. And that is all I have. Ms. Camphausen?
I don't have any formal committee reports, but I did have the pleasure of attending Kenmore Hall's first STEM Night for families. And I just want to, not only did I have fun as a parent, but I just want to congratulate the staff there and just the show of dedication. It was fully planned and run by staff and teachers. And what was amazing about it is, you know, it was a typical STEM-type project where it involved families working together in groups, but the kids had learned this content in their curriculum. And so the parents got led by our children in implementing these projects that night. And so having to take a backseat as they really kind of schooled us on exactly how to do it. It was a wonderful event, and I hope they have success in the future of continuing events like that. And I know this is just a sample of many of the types of events that all of our schools do across the county, and I just think it's just a wonderful show of dedication to the community by the staff and teachers there, giving of their extra-duty time to do this for their families, so.
Mr. Manlove?
I would like to be the keynote speaker of the National Junior Honor Society for Perryville Middle School. And these students of a school of 350 children had to demonstrate service, integrity, and responsibility, as well as carry an overall average of 3.5 or higher. There were 51 students who qualified just this year to join the National Junior Honor Society, and we were all looking forward to see the great things they have to achieve.
Thank you. We will now move on to our Cecil County Public Schools Employee Organizations Report. Ms. Ranko?
Good evening, President Branch, Dr. Devine, members of the Board, leadership team, and guests. Our Triple CTA and CESP members were very active in the primary election. Members educated themselves on the stances of the candidates and then encouraged friends and family to support our recommended education-friendly candidates listed on our traditional Apple ballots. We had members at polling locations throughout the county handing out the Apple ballots and supporting our candidates on Election Day. I'm happy to report that all of our recommended candidates will move on to the general election. We encourage everyone to stay informed and involved with candidates and their issues affecting their families as they move on to the general election. We also had a great success in our local MSEA elections. Several of our members won seats as state delegates to the National Convention this June and July. And after a crowded field with many candidates from large counties and two runoff elections, I'm proud to say that Triple CTA Executive Board Member Jake Zebly was elected as an NEA Director. This means he will serve on the MSEA Board of Directors, as I do, but also represent us at the national level, meeting with members of Congress and working on behalf of Maryland Public School students and staff. On May 4, Triple CTA was privileged to honor all of our educators during Teacher Appreciation Week at our Service Recognition Social at the Chesapeake Inn. We enjoyed recognizing our members who had reached 20, 25, 30, 35, and 40 years of service in their profession, and we even had one lovely lady who is at 44 years of teaching. So that was really special. Hearing the room break out into applause as each name was called was very meaningful because that cheering section knew from their own experiences what passion, grit, and dedication was required to reach each one of those milestones. We're very lucky to have such an amazing group of educators who help to guide and mentor their new colleagues and also work continually as a team to help meet each child's needs. Thank you to those that continue to support our students, our teachers, and staff, day in and day out, year in and year out. Each year of a child's education is precious, and each child is precious. So this is a never-ending challenge. I ask you all to please reach out to our county council members and ask them to fully fund the county executive school budget and projects so that we can have the resources necessary to continue meeting this challenge to educate every child. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ranko. Are there any other employee organizations here tonight that would like to come forward? Hearing none, we will move on to our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Devine?
Thank you, President Branch. In the fall, Congress passed the Every Student Succeeds Act, which has replaced No Child Left Behind as part of the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Currently, the United States Department of Education is working on the regulations at the federal level to accompany this law. It is important that we acknowledge a lot of the good work that has been done in the last decade regarding the implementation of rigorous standards, quality curriculum and instruction, and the preparation for new assessments as part of major reforms. That being said, it will also be important to take the opportunity to improve upon any part of the reforms the state and local agencies deem appropriate. There is more local control than ever before. However, Maryland state law must still be followed until such time that legislation would change it. Tonight, later this evening, I will be presenting the latest decision by the Maryland State Department of, or State Board of Education regarding what will be required for students on assessments going forward that they must pass in order to achieve a high school diploma. Mr. Carriello will also be sharing major legislation that has passed that affects our schools. As the Board knows, the county executive included many of our capital projects in her proposed budget, including the completion of Perryville Elementary School, the beginning of Gilpin Manor Elementary School, the boiler projects at Bohemia Manor, Cherry Hill, Kenmore, and Thompson Estates. Also included were planning dollars and funds to purchase the land for a new Chesapeake City Elementary School. In exceptionally good news last week, we learned first that the state would, in fact, allocate their portion of the Gilpin Manor project, making their allocation over $3.6 million to start the project. And then we received the news just very yesterday that the Board, or Friday, that the Board of Public Works increased that amount by $434,000 because another county did not get the support for their project. So we will have almost $4 million from the state to contribute to the Gilpin replacement. And we're very excited to begin the construction of this new elementary school, and it will be the first completely new school in this county since Rising Sun High School and Elk Neck Elementary back in 1991. So we're very excited about this progress. Also, as we will explain later in this meeting, our E-Rate funds will allow us to address also some long-awaited improvements on the small capital list, which we're very, very pleased about. And we're working very carefully and closely with the county to bring all of this to fruition. Tonight, we are going to be expressing our appreciation to our school nurses for all they do to ensure student health and well-being and to our law enforcement partners with whom we work side by side to ensure student safety in a positive school climate. I also wish to congratulate Northeast High School and Bohemia Manor High School as silver winners in the Top 100 High Schools by U.S. News &amp; World Report, while you achieved them. We're also pleased to recognize the talents and accomplishments of the following groups tonight, purpose for why many of you were here, including those who excelled in eCyber Mission, Destination Imagination, FBLA, FFA, Skills USA at the state level, and those who were selected as Carson Scholars. In other instructional news, STEM and Project Lead the Way capstone projects will be showcased at Elkton High School on May 25 from 5 to 7 p.m. Come out and see the amazing work of these students. And we are looking forward, as Mr. Manlove alluded to, to our high school graduations that will be held on June 9 and 10, the culminating activity for every school year. That concludes my report, President Branch.
Thank you, Dr. Devine. We will now move on to our Business and Education Partnership Advisory Council Report.
Ms. Keaton has prepared her monthly report for the Board's review. Do you have any questions for Ms. Keaton?
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Keaton. Our next item is our Construction Report.
I'd ask Mr. Willis to update the Board on a couple of matters in this regard.
Thank you, Dr. Devine. President Branch, members of the Board, leadership team, and guests, just a couple of comments I wanted to add to the Construction Report by May. You'll see one project in there listed as a QZAB project. That's a Qualified Zone Academy Bond-funded project. That project is a playground at Bayview Elementary School that requires a 10% match by a private company, and we're waiting on the results of a grant that was requested through the Lowe's store in Northeast. The QZAB project was approved by the state because the rest of the funding would come from them, but it will be adjusted based on what the grant monies come from Lowe's, and we'll try to make alterations to the total budget once we receive any final approval from the Lowe's Corporation. The second project you'll see in there is an aging schools project. Aging school money comes to us from the state of Maryland, and it's based on age of square footage and also some other factors like free reduced population at an individual school. The project we chose is to take on the Northeast High School Gymnasium, try to make some much-needed renovations in that gymnasium. Several years ago, we took out some noise reduction material that was basically falling apart from the ceiling. So we're going to go back in with some newer noise reduction systems and redo the floor and also do some HVAC upgrades in that building or in that gymnasium along with a lighting project. So all in all, the renovation on the inside of that gymnasium should much improve that building since it has been that way since 1972. So we're going to use the aging school money to that degree. And the last thing I'll mention to you is from the project that just keeps on giving. Last month, Mullin Contracting received an award from the Associated Buildings and Contractors of Baltimore for the tenant fit-out for the School of Technology, the A-12 Appleton Road project. Mr. Simpers went down and accepted the client piece of this award. The award goes to Mullin Contracting. It was a much-deserved award, in our opinion. Did an outstanding job, on budget and on time, and it was well-deserved, in my opinion. Thanks very much.
We'll be placing that in our showcase along with another award.
Does anyone have any questions about the Construction Report?
Congratulations on the award. I just wanted to ask about the boiler projects. I noticed they spill into the upcoming school year. I imagine that there won't be any interruption in schedules or...
Right now, the schedule is to have them up and operating for the October heating season. We usually, right around the end of October, we start turning boilers on. Right now, we believe we can make that timeline. Very fortunate that three of the projects are awarded to the same contractor, and right now, we're hearing that lead times on those pieces of mechanical equipment will be on time. The other project at Bea Manor, we believe that that contractor also is making a positive determination as to getting it up and running as well. So it will be tight, but we'll monitor and make sure that we're well aware of the timelines for the season.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, we will move on to the recognition portion of this evening. We will begin with our National School Nurse Day.
And Dr. Teagland, our Associate Superintendent for Education Services, will lead this resolution. Welcome, Dr. Teagland. And let me add before she begins. We're going to do the photos for the nurses and the police here in the room, but when we get to the student awards, the eCyber Mission state winners and the Carson Scholars, they'll be recognized here, but the photo will be out in the lobby because there'll be more room.
Good evening, President Branch, Dr. Devine, members of the Board, leadership team, and audience. It's my pleasure to welcome Ms. Michelle Ness, our nurse coordinator, and Ms. Kim Cole, school nurse for Northeast Middle School. If you could join Ms. Branch at the front of the room, please, while we recognize and bring forth the resolution. Cecil County Public Schools National School Nurse Day. School nurse, better health, better learning. May 11, 2016, resolution. Whereas school nurses serve as the health advocate and resource for all students focusing on the promotion of healthy living styles and the prevention of illness and disability. And whereas school nurses promote and protect the optimal health status of students and assist staff in complying with policy procedures concerning the administration of medications as necessary during the school day. And whereas school nurses provide health assessments by obtaining the health and development of history of students, screenings and evaluating findings of deficits envisioned in hearing. And whereas school nurses interpret the health status of students to parents and school personnel, initiate referrals to parents, school personnel, and community health resources for intervention and remediation, and provide ongoing health counseling with students, parents, school personnel, and health agencies. And whereas school nurses participate as the health team specialist as a member of the student services team and, when necessary, individualized education program committees and 504 committees. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Cecil County endorses the observance of National School Nurse Day and hereby proclaims Wednesday, May 11, 2016, as National School Nurse Day in the Cecil County Public Schools. Presented this ninth day of May, 2016. Signed, Don K. Branch, Board of Education President, and Dr. D. W. Devine, Superintendent of Schools.
I recommend that the Board of Education adopt the resolution, National School Nurse Day, as presented, to be observed in all Cecil County Public Schools.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Our next recognition this evening is our National Police Week Resolution.
Mr. Vincent Carriello, our Associate Superintendent for Administrative Services, will share this resolution, recognizing our police. Mr. Carriello, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Devine, President Branch, members of the Board, leadership team, and guests. This evening, we have with us from the Cecil County Sheriff's Office Sergeant Todd Creek and Officer First Class Stavros Plaginakos. Gentlemen, if you would come up front and stand with President Branch. And I'll read the resolution. Cecil County Public Schools Resolution, National Police Week, May 15 through 21, 2016. In recognition of the service given by the men and women who night and day stand guard in our midst to protect us through enforcement of our laws, whereas the police officers of America have worked devotedly and selflessly on behalf of the people of this nation, regardless of the peril or hazard to themselves, and whereas these officers have safeguarded the lives and property of their fellow Americans, and whereas school resource officers with the support of police departments in Cecil County work collaboratively with school system staff to realize the Board of Education's goal that all students will learn in a safe, secure, and inviting environment. And whereas the daily presence of law enforcement officers in our schools has had a positive impact on our students and made the officers an integral part of the school community. And whereas these men and women, by their patriotic service and their dedicated efforts, have earned our gratitude, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Cecil County does hereby proclaim, May 15 through 21, 2016, as National Police Week in the Cecil County Public Schools. Presented this ninth day of May, 2016. Don K. Branch, President, Board of Education, D. W. Devine, Superintendent of Schools.
I recommend that the Board of Education adopt the resolution, National Police Week, as presented, to be observed in all Cecil County Public Schools.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. And while they're shaking their hands to the Board, I would like to thank them and their fellow officers for all they do in our community and nationwide.
their fellow officers for all they do in our community and nationwide. Our next recognition this evening is our eCyber Mission. Dr. Devine?
Thank you, President Branch. And Dr. Joseph Buckley, our Executive Director for Middle School Education, is going to lead this presentation. It's Dr. Buckley.
Thank you, Dr. Devine. President Branch, board members, leadership team, and guests. It's an honor tonight to present to you the Cybercats and the Cyberstripes from Rising Sun Middle School. They participated in the eCyber Mission competition, which is one of several science, technology, engineering, and mathematics initiatives offered by the U.S. Army Educational Outreach Program. eCyber Mission, sponsored by the U.S. Army and administered by the National Science Teachers Association, is a web-based STEM competition that is free to students and designed to help build students' interest and knowledge in STEM. Students in grades six through nine are challenged with developing a solution to a real-world problem in their local community. Students compete on state, regional, and national levels. We introduce to you tonight the Cybercats, who placed first out of all six-grade teams in the state of Maryland, and the Cyberstripes, who placed second in the state of Maryland among all eighth-grade teams. I'd like to bring forward at this time their principal, Mr. Rick Edwards, and the Instructional Coordinator for Science, Mr. Frank Hardo. If you could join Ms. Branch up front. The sixth-grade team, whose project was on the most effective way to disinfect cat litter boxes. They found that scrubbing with dish soap, followed by disinfection with bleach, was the most effective method, and they placed first among six-grade teams in the state of Maryland. Please join me in congratulating the following students. Logan Garvin?
Indigo Garv-
Indigo Garv, excuse me. Number one. Indigo Garvin, grade six. And Emily DeJesus. Both of these teams are coached by Mary Denver. She could please join them up front. The eighth-grade team's project was to disinfect six surfaces in the school that had previously been found to have a high number of bacterial colonies, and see how long it took the bacteria to build back up after disinfection. This team placed second in the state of Maryland amongst all eighth-grade teams. Those team members are Logan Garvin. Brian Lee. Please join me in congratulating these folks one more time.
Please lift up the board, and then go out into the lobby for your further. And Dr. Buckley will continue with this recognition program for this year's Carson Scholars. Dr. Buckley?
Thank you, Dr. Devine. President Branch, board members, leadership team, and guests. It's a privilege tonight to bring forward our Carson Scholarship Award winners. We have four first-time Carson Scholar winners with us this evening, and nine repeat winners joining us tonight. The Carson Scholarship is awarded to students who think big, have a 3.75 minimum grade point average, and have demonstrated humanitarian qualities. They serve on their student councils, their school boards.